October 11th to order. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Devene Neno.
Here.
Wizie, here. Ringer.
Here.
Olson. Battle.
Here.
Whistler.
Here.
Lumer.
Here.
Okay, you figured out that our, uh, city planner is online with us and will be participating virtually, um, as we go through the meeting. Uh, we're gonna start out with, uh, communications from the board. Um, any update on urban renewal? Jeff, Courtney?
Um, I'll just report that, uh, there's some discussion about inviting Brad Barker to one of the meetings, maybe in November, December, to buy some information on what the legislature has done with TIPS. And also, I think I saw something about maybe meeting with the Workforce Committee as well at some point.
All right. Anything to add, Courtney?
Um, one of the things I'm gonna add for our, our TIPS, uh, or Urban Renewal Agency, there is a statewide TIPS working group, and there's a lot going on with the state in regards to TIPS. So I attended a pretty long meeting this morning about that. Um, so our Urban Renewal Agency will get caught up with what's going on across the state with TIPS districts.
Okay. All right. Uh, Jen, anything from the City Council that pertinent to us?
Sure. Uh, most of the meeting yesterday was, um, spent discussing next steps for, uh, for the airport, um, including a table, the first reading of a boundary ordinance. Um, next, in two weeks, we will have that back on the agenda. So first reading, once again, with some amendments based on discussion yesterday, as well as a draft in our local agreement with the county ideally. That's the goal. Um, and those documents kind of go together. The, the one thing I'll mention is that the, uh, mayor included in the board packet for yesterday's meeting, um, the 2004 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy document, um, which refers, is, is, you know, it paid $18,000 to produce it. It's, I don't know, probably 40 pages or so. Um, and it refers specifically to the development of that, um, those, that land up there, so airport and surrounding city property. Um, and it is 20 years old. Um, but it was included in the packet and the mayor referenced it in regards to planning for future development up there and that the document should be reviewed as a community. Um, and so I suspect that that, um, task might fall to this group, um, in the near future. In addition, the next steps, um, once the boundary is agreed to, um, will likely be an application, or basically an update of the FAA proposal for funding to help fund the airport. And, uh, that master plan is a 300-page document that I also think will come to this body and should come to this body. So those are two things that we should plan to spend significant amount of time on and collect input on.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Hey Courtney, did you talk about having Steve Smith come and talk to us about the status of the airport plan, master plan? Is that somewhere in the near future?
Yeah, I've, um, reached out Steve Smith and Lance Bowser. So Lance, we're trying to have Lance come and talk to the planning board. Um, Lance was kind of, he, he kinda felt like everything was gonna be on pause until after the New Year's, but he said if you guys wanted to come, he can come. So I said, yes, please come. And that data from the, the airport affected area, since we have some new planning or memories and where they are with all of that.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the proper timing is of when that should happen. I'll leave that to you and, and the staff to make sure that we get it in a timely fashion whenever it's appropriate, so. Okay.
Yeah, I'd like it, I'd like it before the end of the year. I don't know why, he, he was just kinda getting a feeling that things are kinda being, not drawn out, but put on hold until the New Year, but, um, I'd like to get them in before the New Year.
Okay. And both those documents, the, uh, the master plan draft and the comprehensive development strategy is on the webpage if you wanna access it, anybody? Hopefully you have already. Okay, before we get into new business, um, I'm not sure, but I wanna welcome Messy Racine on board. She's a new staff member. If you've met the board members here, welcome. You are in Courtney's office as her assistant, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, uh, moving into new business, uh, we're having a public hearing on a zoning amendment petition, um, requesting a, a move from C1 to C4 at 305 Broadway Avenue North. Um, at this time, I'll qualify the board. Um, does any member of the planning board have an ex parte communication to disclose?
No.
Does any member feel that they should recuse themselves from participation in the hearing and decision on the matter before us?
No.
Um, has the matter been properly noticed as required by Red Lodge zoning regulations? Courtney?
Yes.
Okay. Let the record indicate that the Red Lodge City Planning Board has been called and qualified to hear the matter at hand, and that matter is a quadidjudicial nature and is properly noticed. Um, the procedure now, for those that aren't familiar with it, we'll first hear a report on the request from the city, and then we'll ask the applicant to come forward and give us their, uh, review of the, of the request. And then I will open it up to public to address the, on this specific issue, any comments on this specific issue. And then there'll be questions, uh, from the board, uh, on the behalf of the applicant or the city. Um, and then we'll see if there's any written comments to put in the record. So that's kind of the process we're gonna go through. So Courtney, do you wanna start reviewing your report on the behalf of the city?
Uh, yes, thanks, Al. So, uh, city staff received a petition for a zoning amendment at 304 Broadway Avenue North, uh, which is currently zoned C1 and is also within the Commercial Historic District overlay. And so the proposal is to, from the property owner and the business, La Palmita, is to amend the zoning district from C1, Central Business Transition, to Central Business District. Um, the primary purpose of this petition is for a proposed increase in the amount of indoor seating to accommodate for if there's bad weather where the current outdoor seating, um, doesn't, isn't sufficient, uh, which would change, increase the number of off-street parking spaces that would be required. Um, there is some reference to the growth policy, uh, that's covered a little bit later regarding, um, some descriptions, uh, general descriptions of what's considered as our Central Business District. Um, moving forward, some of the surrounding land uses, it is kind of a mix. There's the library across the street, which is, uh, zoned P1 and is also within the historic overlay, uh, to the south, is Central Business. Um, there's a few properties of, um, well, there's R3 to the east, and then even though it's C1, the north, a few of those properties are used as residential, but I will say I have had some interest in, um, adding some commercial, like, you know, smallish retail out of the front of at least one of those buildings within the last week or so. Um, so there is some interest in possibly changing some of those to more light commercial uses, um, and keep also residential in the back, commercial in the front. The, in the staff report, I have the allowed use tables comparing, um, uses for C1 and C4. I've copied the purpose and intent for each of those zoning districts as well as for the Commercial Historic Overlay zoning district. I, um, did some review of the, of our growth policy, which generally says the Central Business District extends along Broadway Avenue, US Highway 212 from Fifth Street to Fourteenth Street. It is one half to two blocks deep west of Broadway Avenue and one half to one block deep on the east of Broadway Avenue. The Red Lodge Commercial Historic District, which is on the National Register of Historic Places, has smaller boundaries and is located totally within the Central Business District. This zone is the only, um, district other than the public, a publicly zoned, uh, parcel that's not at C4. It's the only one at C1. Um, and this parcel was included in some of the 1986 Revitalization Master Plan, um, with some designs for revitalization as well as, um, listed as a potential public parking spot because there was that big area in the back. Uh, and then the, um, planning board did receive a few public comments that will be included in the minutes, um, with some, you know, various opinions on this petition.
Okay, um, do we, do we need to read the public comments into the minutes of, into the verbal, or is it just having them in the minutes suffice? I know all the board members have seen them, so do we need to read them?
Um, we don't need to read them at all. It will summarize, one was in support of this amendment, um, to support, you know, the, the business community within Red Lodge. One, really two, so we did receive a letter that was sent to Forest at that time in 2010 when Red Lodge was, had hired Sanderson Stewart to update the, um, the zoning code, the zoning regulations. And so this lot had been proposed to be changed to a C4, and so there is a letter written by residents against that and their reasons why. And we got an iteration of that letter as well, um, that they did not feel like, and I think there's members of the public there today that will also, can also summarize this, but they do not feel that it is consistent with the growth policy and could create future impact, um, that would have negative impact on the, on the residential side.
Okay. I'm assuming the board members have all seen those letters?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, anything else, Courtney?
Al, Brown.
Okay, now it's the opportunity for the applicant, spokesman, to speak to the request. Identify yourself and, uh, I know, we know who you are, but this is for the record.
Sandy Connolly, 307 Hagan Avenue South.
Okay.
I thought Courtney did a really great job. Everything that I had on my list, she pretty much echoed, which was good. The historic nature of this, it started off as a gas station, then it was a fly shop, and then it was a restaurant. Actually, it came in front of the planning board when it was a restaurant to enclose that outside dining area in plastic. We talked about that for, and it was approved, but never done, as well as adding, um, I think it was additional kitchen on the north side of the building. So all of that had been approved, but not, not done. And obviously, the only difference, well, the, the big difference between C1 and C4 is off-site parking. I don't know how many of you go to La Palmita and actually park behind the building and walk all the way around to the front. It's been my experience that people park on Eighth Street, they park on Broadway, they park next to the library, and that's the way they've been using it. The, um, as you know, it's Central Business District, which according to the growth policies, zoning and other regulations encourage revitalization of existing buildings and compatible development with the Central Business District. This works that way. Um, also conversion of existing residential structures to commercial use will be permitted in the Central Business District. Um, the transition zone will be used to facilitate transition between the CBD and residential districts primarily through conversion of existing residential structures where such uses will not generate nuisances affecting adjoining homes. I didn't receive any of those letters, so I don't know how to combat what they said. Um, and according to the future land use, uh, on page 32 of our growth policy, policy should encourage and promote the continued occupancy and investment in existing structures in the historic Central Business District. While this isn't, I don't think, in a historic Central Business District, it certainly is a historic building. Um, I just think that including this parcel in the C4 would agree with the 2020 growth policy by, by keeping La Palmita on a pedestrian scale, helping to ensure the economic vitality of Red Lodge. I did do blowups, 'cause I know that some of, some of us are really familiar with this little piece of C1. If you pass those on. Thank you, Josh. So obviously, what Ricardo was trying to do is he's trying to get some inside dining so he can survive during the winter when he can't use those out, well, nobody wants to sit outside and eat good Mexican food. So this would be, um, a really great thing. And when they gave me the big plan of what they were going to do, which really doesn't have much bearing on tonight's decision, but maybe, it appears from these things that you can actually see in this plan, this is where they planned to expand, and I can see one, two, three, four cars and room for two more cars, and it's supposed to be for six off-street parking to start with. So you might take a look at these as well. So I don't see that they're actually losing any off-street parking with the concept of what they're going to do. And obviously, this board has always struggled with that half a block of C1 right in the middle of nowhere. And, um, we already have some residential uses at the other end, the north end of Broadway, that, that do well. And Palmita's already been there, it was a restaurant before that. The neighbors, there's only one residential neighbor to the north, so I don't see that it's going to actually have a huge impact, if any at all, by losing the requirement for onsite parking. Okay?
Thank you. And, and just so, um, you'll have an opportunity for the board to ask you to hear the public comments and other questions, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else from the applicant? She's great. Okay. Okay, at this time, um, I'm going to open up for, uh, public comments on this particular subject. All persons are required to state their name and address for the record. Uh, try to keep your comments brief and on point and, uh, address them directly to the board. Anybody wanna speak to this? Joel?
Yeah. Thank you, board. Planning board, thank for all the work you guys do. Um, Joel Adams, 314 North Broadway Avenue. Um, and we are also the, the owners of 308 North Broadway, neighbors to them. Um, we've gone through this in 2010 when the then-owner of the lot lobbied very hard to have that converted to what was then Central Business District, what is now C4, um, and went through a very long process of debate, community input, and the, and the conclusion was that the C1, the Central Business Transition District is there for a very good reason, is to keep that residential nature as it was designed. And in the, in the definition, the purpose and intent of, of, of the C1, it basically says that the, that one of the major goals is to prevent conflicts between, between commercial and residential uses. Our neighbors, as they are right now, have absolutely no problems. You guys are great, um, and I actually would like to see you be able to increase your, your, your seating, uh, indoor seating, and, uh, I fully understand that. I've never, I wouldn't oppose just, uh, something to, to increase seating. But I do have a problem with this changing the zoning to Central Business District because suddenly not these folks, but the next owners of the property could occupy side to side, five-foot setback, 45-foot tall building, take the Labor Temple, move it across the street and put it next to our residential buildings, and you've just lost the whole purpose and intent of the Central Business Transitional or the C1 zoning. So, um, again, you guys are great neighbors, I've got no, no, no issues, I'm not trying to stop you from doing, but I just encourage the applicants and the planning board to, to find a way to work within the current zoning district and, uh, the, the requirements of, of what could make it possible for them to, to meet their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments online? Any virtual people wanna speak to this? Messy, have you seen anybody that wants to raise their hand online? No? Any other comments from the, those here? Not hearing any? Okay, at this time, um, it comes back to the board and, uh, it's our time for any questions that board members may have of either the applicant or the city. Jeff, do you wanna start?
Yeah, I guess I'd kind of refer my comments to staff a little bit. Um, as was pointed out earlier, there's quite a bit of history behind this particular parcel in terms of changing the zoning and, uh, as well as, as Joel alluded to back in 2010, and, and I think that's pretty pertinent to the discussion going forward in, in terms of, uh, of having some background and establishing some context in terms of the purpose and intent of the C, C1 versus the C4. Um, so it, it's a little disappointing to find that, that that historical context and sort of some of the past conversations and discussions that have gone on about this parcel really weren't captured or incorporated into, into the staff report. Um, I think, I think that's, that's fairly pertinent. I've got other comments when we get more into the discussion, but that's, I guess, my, my question. I really don't have a question to, to staff as much as basically that comment.
Teresa, do you have any questions of the staff or the applicant?
I, I don't have any questions for staff or from, from the applicant.
Okay, Jen?
Um, I was curious about, so when I, when I was reading through the, um, communications and looking at the 2010, uh, the comment about the 2010, um, discussion, I only saw, like I saw a petition of sorts, I saw a letter signed by two individuals, I didn't see additional feedback, but it, it, the assumption is that it was a robust conversation that just didn't get captured, is that?
Well, there was, there was, yeah, in terms of, I think in terms of the, the minutes of the board, um, there's, there's a, that actually has to do when, uh, Mustako applied for their conditional use. There's quite a record of discussion there, there, but doesn't, that didn't have as much to do with the zoning per se, zoning change per se, had to do with, with conditional use.
Okay, okay. And then, um, this is just a question for Courtney, but you, Courtney mentioned that the libraries of P1 is also in the historic overlay, so, um, I understand the comment that this particular property is not in C4, um, and that kind of stands out, um, as an anomaly, but it's also the case that there are other, um, there are other zones within the historic overlay, 'cause you've got the library, which is P1, you've got this particular parcel, which, correct? Okay. All right, I just, I'm just trying to understand the landscape. Thank you.
Palmita, do you have any questions of, of either the applicant or the staff?
Well, I'm kinda curious about, I mean, I would like to reiterate what Joel had said, 'cause I was thinking about this too, and that if you end up a C4, um, further down the road, somebody could build a two or three-story building on that corner, which I don't think preserves the nature of the residential neighborhood, and, um, why they didn't apply for a conditional use rather than a complete zoning change.
Do you have a funny answer to that?
I didn't think that a conditional use would allow for, um, off-street parking. I've never seen us do a conditional use permit that would eliminate on-street parking.
Courtney, can you address that?
Yeah, if they couldn't get, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? They would be able to get the ability to have a variance from zoning for a conditional use, they would have to apply for a variance to, and that goes to the Board of Adjustments, which is City Council.
Okay.
And a variance, you have to prove, like, I think there's seven, seven conditions in one of those that can't be itself fulfilled hardship.
Okay. Palmita, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Susan?
I may not remember everything perfectly because I wasn't on the planning board then, but I was sitting in the audience most of the time. I do recall when Italiano was here, Mustako came before the board, and they were trying to work out something about parking. Parking was an issue at that point. And they worked on an agreement that involved shared, shared spaces and that sort of thing, which is outlined in, in the zoning ordinance, but whether they ever put it in writing and, and codified it, I don't know, but we did have the tools at that point to make deals with a business across the street or down the block or whatever, that it would be okay for them to refer their excess parkers down to there. And it didn't really materialize too much because that area outside, um, in the summertime, was accommodating a lot of people and the way it was connected to the street and, and totally visible and all that sort of thing, I got the impression that they were getting a lot of the customers as walk-eyes or bicycle riders or that sort of thing because of the pedestrian, um, nature of the traffic going and off-Broadway. But if we codified that back then, I'm wondering if there were some way that that could be modified in some way, or if we could, um, approach the language that's in the current ordinance about shared parking to see if there are some issues that could be addressed that would take care of that. That said, if that were possible, it would save a lot of confusion so far as the people who live in the city are concerned, but if that were possible, it would also make it a lot less expensive for the business owners. Um, so I'm wondering if that could be something that's considered. Uh, I do have concerns like, um, Jeff mentioned, that we don't want to have, I mean, I can't speak for anybody else, I would not want to have, um, 45-foot building going up there, and I probably, you all wouldn't want to have that either. But if we go to the change in zoning, we're putting the whole town in a position of that being a possibility long-term, and that wouldn't be real good for a lot of people. It might be good for a couple of people. Um, I just have questions about that, that particular issue, whatever happened to it. Also, the other thing that I wonder whatever happened to was, as Sandy mentioned, there was, um, a plan to have, um, was a plan to have a cover and a plastic surrounding that would, at least to some degree, weatherproof the outdoor area in the off-seasons, so that it would be possible to sit outside. And I don't remember if it was ever implemented. Part of me thinks that it was, but then it was just dropped at one point.
Never was.
It never was, okay, because I remember the pictures very clearly, and it was, you know, it wasn't-
Like a yurt?
Yeah, pretty much. It wasn't exactly siding, and I'm not sure it would have met the historical society's standards.
There was a fabric siding that we approved, so that they could put heaters in there and people could-
Yeah.
Eat in inclement weather, and we approved that, but it never happened.
Okay. That's all I have to say right now.
Okay. I've got, it's kind of piggybacking, Susan, I've got, just for clarifications, you have 16 seats inside now, is that correct?
Is that correct? Do you have 16?
That's what it says in our report, 16. And you would expand to how many?
And the expand would be how many?
To 42, 48.
To 42, 48.
Does that include the outside?
Include the outside closing, correct.
So-
The outside is not very big, that's why it's not a viable solution. The previous building owners are the ones that did that, not us.
Okay, so under current rules, C1, 48 seats, we require 16 parking places.
A parking lot.
Yeah, a designated parking.
Correct.
Okay, so piggybacking what Sue said, there's parking available, you know, in there behind the library, and there's parking available in other places, and people would have to walk a half a block to the restaurant. Has that been considered at all?
No, it's my memory, and Susan and Jeff, you probably have this, and probably Paulie, I thought that the shared parking were for adjacent properties, adjacent, which means that that vacant lot across the street where we keep seeing the Alaskan seafood people, they pull up and there's sometimes, you know, it's used for a different kind of vendors. I didn't think that that was an option, because it's not adjacent to.
But my question is, if you expand it to your 48 seats, could that parking is available to the customers of your restaurant?
Well, yeah, it's public parking.
Public parking.
So, it's on-street parking, and you have all of Broadway and 8th as well.
Well, I'm trying to find a middle ground here.
Yeah. And perhaps-
Because I understand the expansion part. The issue is the parking.
Right, which is-
The issue is the parking, and then the other issue is what happens when and if they ever leave, and whoever else comes in there. Those are the two buttons, but to me, the primary issue is the parking, and I'm trying to see, have you considered another alternative for parking other than changing the zoning?
Well, then, this was, if, okay, the problem is that if he wants to expand, then he has to increase his off-site parking, okay? I don't think that you can expand and say that that's my off-street parking is behind the library, and I don't think that the kitty-corner lot would qualify for shared parking, although they could probably get an approval from that owner for the overflow. So, yeah, right, I personally think that most people right now park off-street anyway, and the advantage of having this expansion is also two public restrooms that we don't have down at that end of town, so we would really like the expansion, not only from the extra seating and extra kitchen space, but to have two public restrooms in that restaurant. It's a restaurant without public restrooms. So, the expansion is really needed to make this an economically viable parcel, as far as I can see. So, the parking is the issue, and if we could just get a variance, but we all know that a variance is very, very difficult to get, and you have to prove hardship, and like Courtney said, that if we want to expand, then we're creating our own variance and, you know, or a request for variance. So, a variance wasn't an option. I'm sure that there's no problem with the parking situation any worse than it is right now, because the other advantage is having more indoor seating doesn't really go for tourism, it's more for locals, because during the winter, that's, you know, that's the bulk of the business, are locals. So, that's why we want the inside as opposed to the outside. Yeah, and I have the 2015 planning board applicant from Jenny and Michael for the, what do they call it, a seasonal tent enclosure. That was 2015, and no, they never acted on it, but they also, I believe they also requested expansion at that time. This was the conditional use, not the design review, and I think that they also requested expansion on the north side of the current building, and that also was approved. Does that, Courtney, do you remember that, or is that before your time?
They didn't do that in 2021, but they didn't allow them to expand the north, that they were going to, yeah, expand to the east and remove, I think it would have removed a couple of parking spaces.
Right.
Okay, I get it. Courtney, my question to you is, based on Sandy's comments and my question, if we stay at C1, is shared parking in those areas that I suggested an option or not?
I think shared parking has to be on an adjacent lot. There is some saying about if it's off-site, can't remember that off the top of my head. They could also, they could still pursue a variance from, you know, from the zoning regs, but I have a couple other comments as well, whenever you're ready for me.
Okay, I'm going to get rebuttal from the city here in a minute, but I'm just trying to get the board questions answered before we go to discussion. I mean, when you say adjacent properties, across the street, so that doesn't make it adjacent, huh?
No, I'm trying to, I'm looking to that shared parking.
All right, well, if you find something, let me know later, so.
He had that discussion about shared parking with the Sunhouse or whatever, and there was a part of that discussion said the shared parking could be the IGA lot, which is actually kitty, it's not adjacent, but it's kitty-corner, so it's-
Lot and a half.
So, it's not, it's somewhat similar to this situation.
Okay, as we move on, any other que-
Alimony, so off-street parking areas must be located within a 500-foot radius of the use served by such parking measure between the entrance of the use to be served and the outer perimeter of the farthest parking space within the off-site parking lot.
So, across the street would probably be close. Okay.
I think, I think that would also include the parking, the public parking that is at the library and the art skills.
That's what I'm after, then, yeah.
There's one other option, we have another option too that was suggested. What if there was a deed restriction?
Say again.
If you changed it to C4, the owner would agree to a deed restriction to go no higher than two stories ever. It's a deed restriction, it runs with the land, so you would never have a four-story building there.
I think that's a reasonable compromise that we should-
I know we've been trying to find-
I'm trying to find the space there.
But I think the deed restriction is very strong.
I'm sure that'll be discussed. As we move on, any other que, go ahead, Sue. I'm just asking for questions here, so we can-
Yeah, I have a question about if it were to go to the other zoning. Since it's in a historic district, wouldn't there, and if there were an expansion, wouldn't there need to be input from the Historical Society about whether or not the expansion plans met the historic standards?
Yeah, because it's going to use-
Courtney, is that right?
Design.
Yeah, that's actually one of the things I wanted to point out, so we're, there's a lot of assumption that someone can just come in and wreck out this building and put in a, like, a 40-foot building. Any removal of a building within the historic district has to go to planning board and through the Carman County Historic Preservation Officer before it can be removed, and so, and just that being within a historic district protects that building from any major modifications to it.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board? Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I guess I've got a question both either for Courtney or the applicant. So, if you're looking to expand seating to 48, I guess, number one is where is that expansion going to occur, and how is that indoor seating going to be provided for? In other words, are you talking about permanent alteration, alteration of the building in order to make it a permanent, permanent expansion, or are we talking about the temporary exposure that we approved previously, which was, the intent there was to basically put up an exposure over the winter months and take it down over the summer, so it would be outdoor seating? The other question I have has to do with providing parking for 48 space for 48 people. According to the parking regulations, then, I guess this probably gets at what, more the parking issue, but that means that need to have 16 additional spaces.
Right, it went from-
And there really isn't space for those in the back of the-
That's what I was getting at with it. Okay, to answer his first question, applicant, is this a temporary or permanent canvas, building expansion?
We have hired an architect to do a plan of the expansion. It'll be a permanent expansion in the back of the building, taking about, I believe it's 12 feet to the north and about 20 feet to the backside where the parking lot is, and it will be completely, completely, the east, completely matching to the existing historical look of the building. So, that's the plan. The interior front is probably on arch, which will be glass, so it's fairly noticeable, but it's enclosed as opposed to tarp. We're not interested in tarps, that's part of it. Previous administration, previous owners, we're not interested in doing tarps, just glass. The other thing is that the, yes, it's going to increase the amount of people in the winter, but we have the same amount of people in the summer, they're just outside, so we're trying to get the community service as opposed to the tourist's service, to have them inside, which is completely, we get, oh, well, it can't be, outside is too cold.
To answer your question, Jeff?
Well, partially so. There's a setback, side setback requirement for C1 that doesn't exist for C4, and so, I guess, has to be, there has to be a six-foot setback, so if you're expanding to the north, number one, are you going to meet that six-foot setback, and number two, if you go, if you go upright to the property line as is allowed in C4, that's going to have an impact on the adjacent property.
We have, we have taken that into consideration, and we have left the required setbacks for C1 so far. Everything we've done has been for C1. So, even if we really change it to C4, to just not have to worry about the parking lot, maybe still a little more space towards the east side, we have taken into consideration the C1 rulings and have left enough space for it.
So, I guess the real question here, it really resolves around the parking issue, and I think there's alternatives other than changing the zoning.
And I think we'll discuss that, I'll look at ourselves here. All right, any other specific questions to the staff or the applicant before we move on? Okay, hearing none. We've already mentioned the written comments have been brought before the board, and Courtney referred to those, and they'll be part of the minutes. At this point, having heard the questions and the answers, it's an opportunity for the applicant to give us some rebuttal.
I think that we've pretty much covered the basis here. The problem with the C1 zoning is parking requirement to be on-site. It's their intention to make this economically feasible for La Palmita, with the concern that if there can't be an expansion, we might lose them completely, and I don't know what might go in afterwards, so it's kind of like the devil we know, not meaning you, because, you know, our whole goal here in Red Lodge is to encourage business, and this is, this is what this is, that he needs some expansion in order to stay and be economically feasible here. So, it's, I think it's just really important that we find a way, either through zoning or suggesting, you know, this off-site parking, you know, come back, whatever, or deed restriction, or whatever works. I'd like to see some way that we can make this happen.
Okay. It's a little bit out of order, but a prerogative of the chair, I've got one quick question for you. Can you tell me what percentage of your business is walk-up versus automobile?
Do you have any idea? Do you need to translate?
I don't think he has that information, because he's now running two restaurants, and I don't think he kept an honest track of that information, but I have to say, let me ask him directly. Okay, yeah, I can.
The reason I ask the question is, the assumption is that all 48 tables would park, and maybe there's a percentage that, Red Lodge being a walkable city, that there's a percentage that walks and you-
So, in the summer, he feels, English people come from all over the state.
Okay, all right, and maybe it's an unfair question, but I was curious, so. Okay, anything else from the applicant?
We've never had any parking issue. The parking is always empty. People park up front, on the side, on Broadway, so it's not like-
Chris, in my first one, it's got a-
Yeah, he says his personal parking's fine.
All right, Courtney, it's your chance now to give us some rebuttal before I turn this over to the board, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for the discussion. Courtney, do you have any rebuttal?
I do, so, you know, the 2010 conversations I learned about yesterday, and, I mean, really, if there's expectation for city staff to just look through minutes of other meetings looking for them, I just want to squash that expectation. You know, the 2010 conversations, yes, are important because they are relevant, but our 2020 growth policy states that our central business district is from 5th Street to 14th Street, and our historic overlay is entirely within the central business district. It is one of the roles of this board to implement policies and principles set in that growth policy. And so, currently, our zoning map is not implementing our growth policy, and so we change that either through our zoning map or through our growth policy. There, yes, there's other zoning districts, but they're P1 because they're publicly owned, and they're not commercial businesses, so the law company says the only commercial business that's not C1. I already talked about the, you know, the historic district overlay and how that creates some protection towards this piece of property, so it's not that somebody can just come in and tear it down and put in a three-story business, but, yeah, at some point, our community is growing. I think we are getting more interest in commercial uses in those houses, because businesses are doing well, and we're getting new businesses that want to come into town, and they're not able to find good startup locations, so I think we are going to get some more business pressure for those other units within the C1. So, that's something for this board to consider in our conversations in the future.
Right, thank you. Okay, hearing, no other rebuttal comments from the applicant or the city? I'm going to close the- I'm going to close the public hearing. At this point, the board will have discussion amongst ourselves. Again, if, if there is a critical issue that you want to bring, I'll jump out of Robert's rules a little bit, just raise your hand, and I'll try to call on you at the appropriate time. But right now, it's the time for the board to have discussion internally on this issue. So, okay. Who wants to start?
I'll start.
Yeah? Go ahead.
So going back, just a little bit on the history again, I want to reiterate the purpose and the intent of the transition zone, and that's really to create this buffer between the central business district and, and residential, the mix of residential and commercial that occurs between this, essentially the downtown and, and the commercial entrance zoning that we have, the C3. So I, and the history of that transition zone, and this is why I bring it up and why it's pertinent to go back to the 2010 conversation, because that really brought forward what the intent of that, retaining that C1 zoning for that block was, and that it was really to protect the residences within that block from the impacts of incompatible commercial uses. I think, I think that's still relevant today. That's part of their zoning. That's why we have a C1 zone, is to provide that transition zone and that buffer. So going back to the growth policy per se, under the investment and regulation, item I talks about the central business district will be used, the central business transition district will be used to facilitate the transition between the central business district and residential districts. That's in our growth policy, that's, that's the background and the, and the support, but this is why we have the C1. And it, it goes on to say, where such uses will not generate nuisances, nuisances affecting the adjourning homes and/or result in the gradual deterioration of the neighborhood due to land use conflicts. So that's, that's why we have the C1. Under zoning, the purpose, again, we talk about the purpose is to permit a mix of commercial and residential uses while maintaining a residential character, number one. Number two is provide a buffer between central business district and residential areas. Number three, minimize conflicts between commercial and residential neighborhoods. And four, promote the continued occupancy and rehabilitation of existing structures. So I guess, so that's that aspect of it, but if we're going to change it to C4, it has more implications than, than, than really addressing the parking issue and conflict and resolving that. And if you look, if you look at the table that Courtney, Courtney provided on allowable versus permitted uses, in addition to the fact that it would provide, allow for a 45-foot structure on that block if we, if we made just outright change from C1 to C4, there's also differences in terms of the allowable uses. For example, commercial entertainment would be allowed on that parcel. Marijuana dispensary would be allowed on that parcel. Alcohol consumption and sales would be allowed on that parcel, all of which are either conditional use under C1 or not, or not allowed under C1.
Gambling and sexual businesses too are also allowed in C4, right?
Conditional.
Under conditional?
Yeah. Yeah, gambling is a conditional, conditional use. So so there's, it's, it's more than just resolving the parking issue. And I think, I think there's alternatives to that. Again, we're trying to promote a walkable community, bicycle community, so, and we've discussed this before, our parking requirements seem to be a little exorbitant for a community that's trying to promote walkability and bicycle use. So I think there's alternatives, rather than going to the extreme of doing a zone change to be able to accommodate that. So in, in some of those we talked about, such as the shared parking, with either the lot that's partially, that's across the street kitty corner, or even IGA, or the public parking, and, and as been stated, parking doesn't seem to be the issue with the on-street parking that's currently occurring. So I think doing a zone change is a rather extreme solution to, to resolve an issue that may have some other solutions, solutions available to it. And I, I think we need to keep, keep that in mind. And really, the, the fourth thing, and this came up with the last application for zone change, number one, it's, it's spot zoning. We're basically carving out a parcel within a block for different zoning rather than trying to keep everything consistent. And the, and, and the other is, it's, it's somewhat setting a precedent. So if somebody comes in, wants to request a zone change for an incompatible use, we have zoning in place, we have these zones established for purpose and intent, and just to arbitrarily change the zoning for a convenience, I think, is really setting up a really bad, bad precedent. So that's kind of where, where I'm coming down. And I really think we ought to look for a solution to the parking issue that, that is, fit within the intent and retain the intent of the C1.
Okay, thank you. Jen, do you want to jump into this?
Eventually, not yet.
Not yet? Teresa?
Just made several of the points I had prepared to make. And what's...
Thought you were just going to say ditto, huh?
No, no. Well, I'd like to strengthen the argument by saying that parking is not the only issue. It truly does change the whole future of that C1 block. It's, parking's not the only issue, it's not the only difference. There are also, in addition to the changes that are possible, the allowed uses would be vehicle repair and service that is not fitting with the nature of the residential neighborhood there. And it could change hands. The, it's, it is spot zoning. I wanted, I wanted to make that, that point again. We just turned down another application for the same reason. And it is expanding the business, not, not just repairing or revitalizing the, the building itself. That's a big difference. It's an expansion, not a rehabilitation, is what I was trying to say. Something that I heard tonight was that one of the, one of the greatest things, goals in Red Lodge is to expand our businesses. I think we need to understand and balance as well the public safety, residential nature, and, and the, you know, experience of living in Red Lodge, not just for businesses, but for people that live here. And that's a zone that was specifically set up to do that, to protect and, and not provide that, not just get the whole bent over to the purpose of businesses. So it is, in, in our review criteria, something that we were listed as having to measure this against. I'd say no, the number one and two in criteria, it does not match the, in accordance with our growth policy, the revitalization, and I don't really see how this promotes an active transportation plan, but it's, it's just something that we need to, we need to protect is our C1 residential interface area.
Thank you. Are you ready?
Yeah. This one has been challenging for me, partially because I'm fairly new on this committee still, or still feel that way anyway, but also because I can, I mean, I think the goal is to find a balance between encouraging business and also protecting property owners, and, and this is one of our beloved local businesses, right? So like, I, I find, I also find it challenging because I think I see Courtney's point, which is, I do think it's important to have a C1, to have a transition zone. But I also think if you look at this map, you know, if you look at the 2016 interactive zoning map, the C1 in the north end of town kind of stands out in a strange place to begin with, right? So I get that it was intentionally there in 2010 to protect this block of residences, but it also is the case that it, it disrupts what is otherwise a contiguous central business district. And so I, I guess I just want to acknowledge that I think that that's, that adds a layer of complexity to, to finding a solution here. And also, I do agree with the previous comments in terms of the fact that we just denied an application for a very similar reason. And while the merits of this particular project are things that I personally, as a resident, would get behind, we have to think about what happens in the future if this parcel is sold as a C4. And while it looks as if this proposed expansion would follow C1 setbacks and things, which is very thoughtful, if we were to change it to C4, it wouldn't be required to do so. And future, this could change, a future tenant could change it. And so, I, I think that as a body, we have some work to do when it comes to, again, if we're going to claim that we are trying to build a walkable community, then we need to look at our restrictions regarding parking and recognize that they're not, they're not in alignment with that goal, and we should look to change those in a broader context, which doesn't necessarily help this applicant today. But I think we have to think about the big picture, and in, right now, the way I see it, we have a larger, we have a larger project ahead of us in order to be able to allow a business like this to thrive, but without just allowing for this one particular idea to happen, and instead to have zoning that, that fully aligns with the goals of our growth policy and the goals of the community as a whole.
Thank you, Jen.
Polly? Well, I think everything's been said. What I'd really like to see is, I'd like to see him come back and apply under a conditional use. And the, and among us, we can probably, I don't know, I'd like to figure out ways we can work with parking, like this, that seems to be a big issue. See, changing it to C4 is just kind of a scary option, as far as I can tell.
Susan?
I'm kind of there, but I'm also still concerned in the fact that they think the four programs for it, about the historical preservation part. It would be hard, it, it could be done if we got that worked out, that Polly was talking about, and also had a plan that we could take before the Historical Society, before the tear-down and expansion was done, because we wouldn't want anybody to be put in a position to where, well, okay, you can expand, but then when the expansion comes up, says, oh, no, the historical preservation isn't going to, okay, then. We, we need to know in advance pretty much what it was going to look like. I mean, not in great, great, perfect detail, but enough that we could run it by the historical officer, and they could make, make suggestions and determinations that would give us something to, a place to start, a place to go from. But I think our main key would be, as we have done in any number of issues, to think creatively about parking and to avoid C4 because it has so many obstacles for future development that would be against many of the goals that we have worked on for many, many years, and the needs of the community as well.
This one's a tough one for me, for a couple of reasons. And I think this board struggles with it on a fairly regular basis, in that maintaining the historical character and the, of the city and wanting to keep it controlled, and yet we are a tourist town, we rely on tourist business, we need to have good businesses within our community, and there's that constant balance between maintaining the character and yet allowing for some business growth and expansion. As I read through this and researched it, I kept coming back, and you could tell from my initial questions, is there another way? I agree with my fellow board members that the unintended consequences, regardless of how many conditions, if we were to approve this on whether it be the, the deeded restriction, maintain a C1 boundaries, prohibit 45-foot building, we could put all those conditions on this, but there's so many things that could be unintended that I'm not sure we could put enough conditions on it to cover everything. So I'm looking for another way, so that you could expand your business, get your 48 chairs, and address the parking issue, whether it be shared parking across the street, whether it be shared parking at IGA, working out an agreement with the residents that they won't park in front of their house. I, I don't know what those answers are, but to me, there needs to be another way to do this. And I'm not sure, does this, would this apply? Courtney, could this qualify as a conditional use application?
With the expansion they're proposing, if it's less than 20%, it doesn't need to be conditional use, and so otherwise, I would just try to work with them on, on a different parking solution that wouldn't require a variance application.
Yeah, so, I mean, fundamentally, where I'm coming from is I want you to be able to expand your business, but I have a hard time making the major zoning change and the implications of it. That's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. Any other comments from the board?
I'm not sure why, Courtney, I'm not sure why we wouldn't pursue a variance and, and some type of exhibit that, that relates that there is an agreement for parking either kitty corner, or with the IGA, or with whatever other property owner is, is adjacent. What, you know, is that a possibility? Why wouldn't you support a variance?
Because black and white, a variance cannot be a self-imposed hardship, so if they are expanding and creating more need for parking, it's a self-imposed hardship. So black and white, you know, and that would just be from the staff report, council can still approve a variance, but I don't, I don't, you know, suggest variances when they, from the get-go, don't comply. If, but it is a route.
If they were to come with a conditional use application and a signed agreement with IGA and...
What if we don't get anybody to cooperate?
Well, then we have a problem. That is exactly the problem.
Okay. And, um, will you give staff and applicant a second for another last, like, comment period?
I will.
Okay.
We'll go off Robert's rules again. It's, it's the prerogative of the chair to change it, I guess, right? Um, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find a solution here. Um, and I, I think we're approaching one. Um, and, and I, I think, I think the applicant has heard the, the comments of the board and they know what our concerns are and there's some pretty smart people back there, um, to kind of figure this out. Um, but, uh, any other discussions from the board? I'm gonna open it up real quick for the applicant and then, um, I'm gonna ask for a motion. And, and just so you know, um, our decision, our decision is only a recommendation. Um, if, if we recommend to approve, uh, it has to be approved, endorsed and approved by the board for the council. And if we recommend to deny, the council can override us or they can agree. So the council hopefully will look at our discussion and our recommendations, but ultimately the decision goes to the council. Any other questions?
Well, yeah, I guess my only comment relative to the expansion is that I think I'd like to see it come back to the board as conditional use. I think, given that they're altering this design, the building, I think at the very minimum, it needs to come back to the board in terms of design review. And even though that we're not changing the use of the property, so I don't know if it would come to us from a conditional use standpoint.
So if, if we were to deny this, they could still come back with a second application for conditional use?
Well, for design review, I think, Courtney, don't, I, they don't have to come before us for conditional use review, but, but they're all...
They, they don't, but after January, this board can't do design reviews anymore because of the new state law.
Say, say that to me again?
After January, so a new state law is that, uh, external boards can't do design reviews. They have to be done by staff internally.
That's a whole nother conversation we're gonna have to have.
That makes that C4 even harder to do.
Yeah. That's another whole conversation we have to have. Now's not the time. I got a definite opinion on that. I'm a local control guy, that's for sure. All right.
Well, Teresa raises a good point. I mean, that rate, that really puts a kink in everything that we've got in zoning relative to protecting our historic downtown and, and maintain, I mean, it, maintaining buildings to retain the historic character of Red Lodge is embedded all the way through our zoning, all the way through our growth policy.
Right, right.
So I'm very uncomfortable with that idea and, and without...
And I think Courtney just put a nail in this deal.
And that's also the reason that the tourists come is because we have this beautiful story.
Yeah. Again, Courtney, we have to have that conversation on our next meeting.
Me too. We're gonna have to come from talk.
It's not me, it's, it's Courtney. It's city staff.
I know, but they're saying that the staff make the decision, not us.
Right.
And I'm not...
All right.
Okay. We'll, we'll have that discussion. Okay. Anything else? All right. Um, Courtney, you have anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I just, I just keep going back to this and, and Jen kind of alluded to it. You know, the, the purpose and intent of a C1, yeah, I totally understand that when you're talking about neighborhoods to the east or even to the west, but when you have a transition district that is in between two central business districts, it kind of loses its purpose and intent for me. Um, to me, that seems like it was just done as, you know, at a time-spot zoning to try to preserve those residences, even though the revitalization master plan actually mentions trying to get rid of the residential structures on, in, along downtown. And also considering we have a block to the south between 14th and 15th Street that's primarily residences that are not in the historic district overlay and are zoned C4. And so it just seems like this, this entire block of C1 was done out of context, you know, just very locally oriented and it's not applied, the goals of that are not applied equitably to the south end of town. So I'm really struggling with 20 to 25 years of conversation of our central business district being from 5th through 14th Street, but we are carving this out and I understand, you know, keeping the residences there, but that block of 14th to 15th has been residences zoned as C4 as well, and we haven't seen those being torn down and replaced yet. So I'm just, that's where I'm really struggling with this, with hearing this conversation because it's not, it's very, it seems like it's only focused in this one area and not focused on other areas where we have residences that, that do exist within the C4 that we are not otherwise protecting.
But this is the area before us now. That's the one we're dealing with.
I'd like to address that.
Okay.
Number one, this zoning goes all the way back to 19, to the original master plan and the zoning that came out of that. So it's not arbitrary. I mean, it's, it's historically been in place to, to preserve the residential character of that block and that's been carried through in every revision of the growth policy that has occurred since then and the revision, in every review of our zoning that has occurred since then. So, yeah, it looks unique, but there's a reason why it looks unique. You know, that it's based on what we've received from the public in terms of what their desire is for maintaining the residential character of that block. Um, so I, I think we really need to understand the history. This wasn't something that was just arbitrarily carved out. There was a purpose in the intent of that, intent for that. And some of that intent has been lost in the numerous revisions and cutting and pasting of the growth policy that has occurred over the last 20-some years. So we, we tend to lose some of that context and some of that historic rationale that went into why we have the zoning that we do. I'm not saying that zoning can't change in the future, but, but the way to do that is number one, address it in the growth policy review and then number two, address it as a review of zoning, not to do it on a piece by piecemeal basis. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm ready for a motion to adopt or deny the staff report.
I'll make the motion.
To?
Deny.
Deny the staff report?
Oh, no.
I'll make a motion to adopt the staff report, CA 2023 dash 02 as finding of fact.
I'll second.
Jen, second it. Any discussion?
Well, I'll just go back to, I think there's some missing aspects of the, of the staff, staff report. Um, I think in this case, particular case, it was well worth understanding what the history was between this, this particular parcel and the future and some of the past decisions that have come before the board. But other than that, that's, uh, that's my only comment.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, Missy, you gonna do the roll call or is Courtney gonna do the roll call vote? Or am I gonna do the roll?
I can do it.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
To Weezy?
Yes.
Richter?
Yes.
Daddel?
Yes.
Olson, Whistler?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes. Okay. Um, this next motion, if there's a move to adopt, that's one thing. If there's a move to deny, we have to include in the motion the reasons for denial.
I've got those.
Okay. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to either adopt or deny the petition.
I move to deny approval of petition for zoning amendment to amend ordinance 957, City of Red Lodge zoning regulations 2022, modifying the zoning of this parcel located at 304 Broadway Avenue North, legally described as Red Lodge, Original Township, uh, 27 South, uh, Town, section 27 Township South, um, range 20 East, uh, R O L P, L T S 7 and 8, blocks 51 of Carvin County, Montana, from the central business transition, transition C1 to central business district C4. And the reasons for denial, um, I've got a number of them.
Can you summarize it?
I'll try. Um, to stay consistent with the central business district, this transition zone, to facilitate the transition between a central business district C4 and the, and the, and the residential districts within C1. Uh, number two is stay consistent with zoning regulations for, uh, for the C1 central business, business transition to permit a mix of commercial, uh, uses while maintaining resident, the residential character. Number two, provide a buffer between the central business district C4 and the residential areas in C, C1. And three, minimize conflicts between the commercial and residential neighborhoods. And four, uh, provide for the, promote, promote the continued occupancy and rehabilitation of existing structures. Um, number three, the zone change expands, allow, potentially expands allowable uses, um, for this, for the C4, some of which may not be compatible with the existing residential uses. And number four, there are, there appears to be alternative solutions to the parking issues such as shared parking agreements, uh, public parking on 8th Street and Broadway. Um, and so those are the reasons.
Did you get all that? Is that, you necessarily taking notes? No? I guess that's all recorded, eh, Courtney? Hope so. I need a second.
I'll second.
All right. Second it by Polly. Um, was that, the verbiage on that motion recorded?
Mm-hmm.
You got it?
Yes.
Okay. Is it clear?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, I need a roll call vote, please. The motion to deny, roll call.
Sorry, to Benedetto?
Yes.
To Weezy?
Yes.
Richter?
Yes.
Daddel?
Yes.
Olson, Whistler?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. You know what the next step is, right?
Well, I'd like to be, I'd like some clearing. Courtney, you said that design review can no longer, after the first of the year, be done through the planning board, even though it's the city planning board.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
So that's going to go directly to the city planner, correct?
It's after January.
That's what I'm saying, it's after January.
Yes, that, city staff.
So in the design review, could we include the shared parking plan? And that would be part of the design review?
Yes, um, your shared parking has to be for uses of different hours of operation. I think your off-street parking is probably your best bet.
Right. And because of the 500 feet, we could include the public parking on the other side of the library?
Yes.
Correct?
Um...
I think that's a discussion we have.
I think, yeah, I think so. There's, there's some standards that I'll just, I'll go over with you guys.
And is it true that we need 16 additional or a total of 16 parking spots?
No. The, the total parking spots, by my calculation...
For 48 seats, it's 16.
Was, uh, 16 total, right? The 48 seats would...
So...
The total would be 48 seats. So you need three, you need one parking spot per three.
Uh, one for three.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
The, I, you know, the other parking requirement is for, um, fast food, even though this isn't necessarily fast food, but the ideas pick up.
Yeah.
The parking requirement for that is less.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, good discussion, a toughie, actually. Um, and, uh, so, uh, moving on with the agenda, um, it's my understanding that the design review for illuminated, all business, the design review for illuminated sign permit for Ace Hardware is still to be tabled, is that correct, Courtney?
No, I, I spoke with Ace Hardware and they are still trying to work with Steele on a different design. Um, and so he said that, you know, if this board wants to deny the application as is, I really don't want it sitting tabled for too long. Um, then he, if he needs to come back with a new permit, he will.
Um, can we just have a motion to, to deny the design review, uh, of illuminated sign permit by Ace Hardware or do we have to go into a more detailed description as per the application, um, which I have in front of me?
It's old business.
Let's see. Uh, where is it?
Yeah, I think he can just, I think he can make a motion to approve or deny, but the, or deny based on, um, that it doesn't meet zoning regulations, that it's too large.
Yeah, because in the, in the sheet that you gave me, it doesn't have the specific language that you normally do, so I, I want to make sure to do, oh, here we go. Um, we need a motion to approve or deny the staff report and then we need a, a motion to, uh, approve or, or deny the application. Is that correct?
What date was that? I'm sorry, yeah, what date was that brought here so I can look it up, too?
Uh, August 17th.
August 17th.
And I think we already approved the staff report.
No, we just tabled it.
No, we tabled the vote.
I don't remember. I thought we just tabled it. Jen, do you remember?
I just remember tabling it. I don't know that we, whether we passed the second quarter.
So I need a, I need a, I need this motion right here.
You need the staff report, both motions, right?
Yep.
Okay.
A and B.
So... Yeah, I don't see it.
Here it is. Jen, would you do it?
Okay. So I'll move to adopt staff report, DR 2023 dash 02 as signing of fact.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
To Benedetto?
Yes, then you just move to deny.
To Weezy?
Yes.
Richter?
Yes.
Daddel?
Yes.
Olson, Whistler?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
All right. So then I'll move to deny design review permit, RD, RLDR 23 dash 02, to allow for an internally illuminated sign located at 1 Oaks Avenue North, um... So I'll move to adopt staff report, DR 2023-02 as signing effect.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
To Benedetto?
Yes, then you just move to deny.
Cody?
Yes.
Richter?
Yes.
Battle?
Yes.
Olson, Whittler?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
All right. So then I'll move to deny design review permit, RLDR 23-02, to allow for an internally illuminated sign located at 1 Oaks Avenue North for the following reasons. It does not comply with our zoning regulations, and the sign is too large.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Jeff. Discussion? Thank you.
Yeah. To clarify, the reason for denial is that the proposed sign would exceed the 120 square foot allowed, that's allowed for signing per parcel.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion? Yep.
Well, we did also ask for, if they were still illuminated, that it would be one white.
Well, they're going to have to have that in the next application. Yeah, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
To Benedetto?
Yes.
Cody?
Yes.
Richter?
Yes.
Maybe she didn't hear you.
She said Richter. Yeah, just, yeah, you got Richter, now you need... Battle?
Yeah, I said Battle.
Yes.
Okay.
Olson? Whittler?
Yes.
Blumer?
Yes.
Okay, do we have an update on the downtown revitalization plan?
Yes. Cody sent me some designs that I will forward along that their design team did. It looks pretty nice, the Survey Monkey, and then some potential posters. It'll be on the website for the Carbon County News. There'll be some ads in the paper for it. So I'll forward those along. We're also planning on, I think she reached out to the Business Alliance this week and to kind of show, you know, some of those preliminary designs as well and was going to tweak them if they had any feedback. And then we're going, we're planning on doing some outreach for the trick-or-treating. And we're also looking for any other outreach events that we can attend to just share. I got some wildflower seeds donated that I'll put in little packets with a sticker that's the QR code for a survey on it to hand out to folks as well, as part of the outreach. So we'll see us around town.
Did she adapt all the recommendations from the survey from our last meeting?
She did, and she, oh, yeah. And she did have a comment, so you can't, you can't just do open-ended, out-of-text permit, but it is set to the maximum amount that's allowed in Survey Monkey.
56 characters.
Okay. And you'll give us a copy of the final survey?
Yes. Once she, I might be talking somewhere tomorrow at some point. But once she has all of the feedback from the Business Alliance and if she's going to make any changes, I'll forward it to you guys, see if there need to be any further changes to the design of things. Otherwise, I think we're almost ready to rock and roll.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Courtney, so you're telling us that she's tweaking the survey to suit the Business Alliance? Or is it just the posters?
Just the posters, just the design.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah. And she is thinking of, during like some of the outreach or maybe some of the public meetings, of making some other poster boards that have questions that I think some of the board members wanted but weren't included in the final survey. That way, we might still be able to get some feedback on additional questions that aren't officially part of the survey. So there might be some of that. We're still kind of debating whether or not to do that.
Okay. Any questions, Courtney, on the revitalization plan?
I was just going to follow up on what Teresa was asking. What was the changes made relative to the request from the Business Alliance?
Just, like, here's the final design of the posters and stuff and just seeing if they had any design feedback.
I guess I'm kind of wondering why are we just reaching out to the Business Alliance and not the community as a general? I think, I'm getting a little concerned that there's a little bit too much focus on the business community and not enough focus on the balance of the community here. And I understand the importance of the Business Alliance, but they aren't Red Lodge. Red Lodge is made up of the rest of us, and we're just as important.
Well, I mean, we're here representing all of Red Lodge. So Courtney, did you say you were going to run the design back by us? Real, like, was Cody going to do that? Or was she just going to run with it after the Business Alliance gave her feedback?
I mean, it's just how it looks. There's no content being changed. It's just, it's just the look of it. Because we're using, the stuff that we use was developed by the Chamber of Commerce with like the web text and websites and what colors and things like that. And that's really more of like the Chamber of Business Alliance sort of realm.
Sort of like the branding?
It's not context, it's just design.
It's just like the Red Lodge brand kind of stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That seems fine.
We're using some of their logos and things that the city is trying, like, the actual city hall is trying to also adopt. So a lot of it's just like running that through them to make sure it's all okay.
Any other questions, Courtney, or comments on revitalization?
Is there going to be any reach-out?